There being a quorum of council presence, this meeting is hereby called to order at 7:15 PM. Please make sure your cellphones are turned off or in silent mode to avoid any unnecessary interruptions in the meeting included. Public comments are only allowed during the public comment portion of the meeting. Please see your agenda. When addressing the city council, the speaker must state his or her name. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the city council. We can be notified at the end of two minutes and you have one minute remaining. And also if you'd like to speak, please, there's a form that you can fill out in the back and then turn that into the city clerk to Ms. Brandon here. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Baker is absent. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Franson?
Here.
Councilmember Shirey?
Here. Okay, um, implication and pledge is Mr. Sykes here tonight. There you are. I'm sorry, there you are. Would you lead us in prayer tonight? And then, um, let's see, Mr. O'Dell, pledge.
Oh, I can do that. Lord Jesus, we're thankful for your many blessings in our lives. Thankful for the opportunity that you've given us to be here. After two years of working for this disc golf course, we ask your blessings upon our time together here tonight. Let us go out of here excited, hopefully, about what's gonna happen for the city of Sims. We ask your blessings upon the council. Give them wisdom in their decisions. Help us to always support this city. And ask your blessings upon this time together here in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'd join me, place your hand over your heart and say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sykes. Mr. O'Dell? Thank you. Okay, we do not have any minutes to review, um, since this is a special session. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Tony Eubright?
Mr. Eubright?
Thank you. Tony Eubright, 8936 Lady Drive. Um, I guess you can go ahead and put those up there. Pathway, when I was, well, I was checking the pathway Wednesday night, I noticed on the way in that there was a, you know, kids, they probably have a, what they call university that they teach, you know, disco, cooking, cheerleading, you know, a bunch of stuff. And one of them was disco. They had set a temporary disco out there. And I took about thirty-four pictures of, you know, the kids, you know, shooting disco. So this is a, you know, community thing. And the churches, you know, archer and everything, they are very thrilled, will be thrilled if we get a disco facility in here. Plus all the people we have here in the community. And I, you know, it seems like the schools would be very interested in, especially the high school, talking about, you know, you know, starting to claw up for disco. So I think this is very good for the community and being on par with the committee meeting. And we've been working on this for over two years. I would like to see this go ahead and pass so we can go ahead and get this set up with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eubright.
Jason Weaver?
Mr. Weaver?
Hey, Jason Weaver, 9710, Jeremy Drop. Keep it real short. I just wanted to tell y'all, I was going around showing some photos of the splash pad. It worked. People loved it. They were real impressed with it and they were, there, I had several people tell me Sims has got it going on. I just wanted to share that with you. And just thank y'all for coming back out again tonight, everybody that's here. Really, really appreciate the support from the council and the people. That's all.
Thank you, Joseph. Thank you.
A couple things real quick, it won't take much time, but I met Jason Jones, who's the vice president of the Mobile Area Disc Golf Association. He's also the president of the Team Jesus Freak Disc Golf. He was not able to be here tonight because he's working, but he wanted me to make sure the council knew. Uh, we're gonna be holding fundraiser tournament for the, you know, for the disc golf course here in Sims. Just whatever it can be used for, you know, we're gonna, we're on board, you know, we're gonna help out. Uh, also, it's Grand Bay, because where I work, it's not Sims, but I started my schools, my principal has allowed me to put in a three hole course at our school. Uh, we're gonna be doing that hopefully by the time school starts. So it's getting to the schools, you know, it's going to get there. So, I mean, it's gonna be little kids up to high school, elementary to high school, we're gonna do this. So I just wanna let you guys know, I promise, students will get involved too. It'll be more than just for adults, it's gonna be for families, for schools as well.
Thank you. Thank you. We have no ordinances on the agenda tonight. Resolutions tonight. First resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds for design and construction of the city of Sims disc golf course. We reviewed and discussed this in the council work session, in regular session, on Tuesday, May 3rd, so we will not need a motion for meeting consideration or a way of reading. Discussion from council, Mr. Baker isn't here yet. Mr. Smith?
When this golf course is opened and a motion goes out, it will brag, as it should, about how Sims has put a quarter million dollars into the golf course. It'll be a big, big feature thing. The problem is that this is written up with only $63,000 on it. It does not include the cost that will be put in for the actual construction. It does not include the cost of the land, which was bought with taxpayers' money. You can imagine how people will be shocked, people of Sims will be shocked, if this proposition that was billed at $63,000 all of a sudden moves out into a quarter million dollars or more. So that's where the problem comes in. If you, your boss asks you for a estimate, a good estimate, of the cost of a project that you bring before him, and you give him a very, very low price, and then later on he finds out it costs three times, four times, five times much, he's gonna wanna know whether you're just, you know, pretty deceitful going in, or whether you're just incompetent. Your boss wants to know what the total price is. Nobody likes to have a price quoted to them and then later on, boom, where did that come from? So that is the problem. This needs to have the total package price on it, and it needs to not be done in the middle of the night, and it doesn't need to be done before the next issue of poll news comes out. You know, it's been worked on for two years, it could be thought about, discussed in the community for a week, certainly, before we vote it. That's all we're, we would be asking for. Let the people of Sims be on board. Don't try to blindside them with something that they know nothing about, they've had not the opportunity to. Can you imagine how the disc golfers will be thought of by, you know, they're, be resented, actually, by having this thing crammed through before they've had a chance to get involved, get on board? As far as the whole proposition's concerned, I think it's pretty great. And I think, if you wanna know, I think this is the highest and best use of this particular property. So I'm all for that. I'm all for the project. I want to be upfront with the public, let them know exactly what's happening.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
No comment.
All right, Ms. Franson?
Well, as far as spraying it on everybody, this has been going on for two years. I mean, this is not being sprung on anybody. And as far, I don't know where in the world, a quarter of a million comes in. The land was already purchased. The land was purchased with cash money, so that we have never taken a loan, we have never floated a bond, we have always paid cash. That's why Sims has been in the black, has never been in the red. So the land is already there, it was already paid for, that has nothing to do with this. I think, I wanna thank everybody for coming out. I think it's a shame that all of your lives had to be disrupted again tonight to come back out here and do what should've been done the other night. So I am absolutely for this, I wanna get it going and done, and I want to propose that instead of $63,000, the project request form and the resolution be amended to show $65,000. And that is a drop in the bucket for this thing. And also, since Sims is already under budget over $400,000, this little $65,000 is a drop in the bucket. And we should get this going tonight.
Okay. I think, I want everybody here to know that the house was initially being made legal out this. However, the property was bought, from my perspective at least, for the sole purpose of being what we're developing, a municipal park. It's gonna have not just disco, it's gonna have fishing grounds, it's gonna have picnic tables. There are various areas available to be put in, a small practice baseball field for kids to use on this area. There's a total of 38 acres, and this is gonna take all or partial use of, I think it's 22 total, 18 wood and four.
Yeah, four, I think, is of the clear land.
But that still leaves a lot of property for other uses, and it's gonna be, it might go, but first looked at the property was, it's excellent for a complete city park where it could do just about anything they wanted to. We could even set a horseshoe kitchen out there.
Okay.
I was, like I said, I was real negative about disco, but I didn't know anything about it, had never heard of that. I had played regular golf a little bit in my younger days when I felt like walking around 18 holes, which I don't anymore. But I've learned more, and one young lady that I think is here tonight that I signed with outside, sitting back there, she's here tonight, so I did have the opportunity to communicate with her. But her letter really, really turned me on last time, so I've had a complete turnaround. These three guys, I've been jerking them around for two years. But I think it's a good thing. I think, I might even get out there and let my 11-year-old grandson try a little while. I may walk around with him, but I don't know how to throw a chrispy, so I'm probably not gonna do much myself. Anyway, and y'all, I'm stalling because I'm hoping that Mr. Baker gets here in time to vote, because he really wanted to be here.
Well, what do you think about the amended amendment?
I agree with the amending at not to $65,000. The others, the work that our code works department's gonna come, they're gonna be doing stuff to keep the park anyway, so I don't see a need for an exact dollar figure in there. We all know it's gonna cost money for the concrete, it's gonna cost money for, we've already got the equipment to mow and all that, we own it, so I'm not real concerned with that. I was more concerned with this initial out, buddy. And it dropped from 107,000 to not to $65,000, which is a pretty good drop, so I'm okay with it. But I agree, I think it needs to be amended to not to $65,000. I think we talked about $50,000 the other night, didn't we?
I just wanted it on record.
Yeah. But I wonder where Mr. Baker is, and unfortunately, I'm sorry.
We can't, you know, we can't keep everybody.
Well, if that was a motion, I'll make a second one up.
Well, I haven't had the chance to comment. The land's been bought and paid for, for, I think, over two years, probably closer to three years now. And that was not really an expense. We did spend the money, but we also gained an asset. And that asset just keeps going up in value. So I don't really see that as an expense, I see the land as an investment. And it was bought mainly because it had the pond on it, it was a beautiful piece of property. And as the resolution was written, it was bought for future use. You know, the, we didn't know exactly what we wanted to do there for the park, but we knew we wanted to do something. The land was beautiful, it had the pond, it was a great opportunity. The council believed the price was a good price, and actually, when we had the property appraised, the appraisal came in higher than what we bought it for. So we gained equity in the property at that point. So I don't see the land as being an expense, nor do I see the land, the cost of the land, that we put all the cost of the land into the disco, because all the property is not gonna be disco, you know? There's gonna be a lot of other things out there, a lot of other activities that I think our citizens are gonna enjoy. And they're gonna be, just like they came to us with disco, and said, hey, this would be a great place, we would love to do this, and we've seen all the support. I believe we'll have other people in the future come back to us and say, maybe we want volleyball, or we'd like a tennis court, or we would like something else with the available property we have out there. So I just see it as something that's gonna grow over time. This is not anything that's been crammed through, it's something that we've actually discussed in Parks and Rec for at least two years now, at least. There's been discussion of it in council when we talked about Parks and Rec on the committee reports. That's one of the things that we've talked about. So it hasn't been, it hasn't been something that's been crammed through, it's not something we've crammed through in the middle of the night, that we're gonna surprise everybody I've not heard other than one council member, one negative comment about a disco. And it's, instead of that, I just keep getting more positive. Please, please put in a, you know, this is something that would be good for Sims, we really want this. So the only thing that I'm hearing is positive. And I think we've been very upfront with the public from day one on this. All of our Parks and Recreation Committee meetings are open to the public, they're regularly scheduled meetings, they're not, it's not secret, you know? The meeting we had Tuesday night was a regularly scheduled hosted meeting. I mean, it's, it's on our website. We meet the first and third Tuesdays, period. You know, nobody's doing anything undercover or in the middle of the night. The only middle of the night may be at a Parks and Rec committee meeting when we're talking about a disco course, but that's about the only middle of the night I can remember. Jerry, what about you? So I think we've been very upfront with the public, and I, I don't know where the $250,000 came from. You know, we do not usually calculate in the cost of labor that's already been budgeted and approved in our annual budget. We don't do that on, we, we mow the library. We did not assign any cost to that, that we expensed off specifically for maintaining the library, the landscaping at the library. When we do things for different organizations, Isaias Festival, the Chamber of Commerce, we apply it, we, and of course, we had a resolution for that, that said it was okay for us to go there and, and help the Chamber of Commerce set up and tear down for the Isaias Festival. Everybody was fighting with that, and there was money involved, if you wanna look at the labor costs there, there was money involved there. But that's something we already budgeted for, it's in our annual budget, we've got that accounted for, it's not anything new, it's not anything over and above what we have budgeted. Property is paid for, it's not like, Ms. Franson said, it's not something that we, we're not buying the property now just for disco, we're not buying a new piece of property. So I just, I think that, and I, I don't, I'm not trying to say this to be mean, or, you know, I just think that I didn't know anything about disco. I knew nothing about disco until I met all you guys. Then I started looking into, what is disco? I started listening to you, started researching on the internet a little bit, and I opened my eyes and I learned. And sometimes, maybe everybody's not in tune or in the same place in their life, you know, maybe it's not something that they do, but we can't, this council doesn't make decisions on what we personally want, okay? That's not being a public servant. This city council should make decisions based on what our citizens are requesting of us, and we're supposed to listen to the citizens. And I do that first, and my personal feelings have to be put aside. That has to be done second, you know? I have to listen to y'all. And that's what I'm, I'm choosing to do tonight, is listen to what the people are asking us. And I'm, I'm fully in support and in favor of the disco, so.
Okay, a second round of council comments, and then we'll, if everybody's okay with that? Mr. Smith?
Are we ready to make a motion on that Shirey's requested?
Yes, if we don't have any more comments from council.
No comment.
Ms. Franson?
No more comments.
Good?
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on what Ms. Franson said?
As amended.
To amend it?
As amended, uh-huh.
Okay.
Include email.
Okay, well then I make the motion that we approve the resolution as amended, not to $65,000.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Roll call?
Is this for the amendment?
This is.
They said as amended, we have not amended it yet, have we?
They just requested amended, they, they requested a motion to adopt the resolution as amended with $65,000 instead of $35,000. They did the amendment in the, in the motion.
What's the reason?
Leaving the way it is.
Sixty-three, sixty-five instead of sixty-three.
Right, sixty-three.
Sixteen, sixty-five. Thirty-five.
Yeah, she was. Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-three. She misspoke.
Well, I.
It's a valid, it's a valid motion.
Can we do the amendment first, because I have another amendment to offer?
Okay, well, we already have a motion, so we need to, we have to vote it up or down. We can't do another motion on that. So I need a roll call vote.
Uh, councilmember Baker is absent. Uh, councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Franson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Okay, the motion to adopt the resolution as amended carries and it's now approved. Uh, is there any other business that might come before the council tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I, okay, I, let me finish with this. Anyone else have any other comments or questions or any other business, because I do. So.
Sorry.
That's okay. I received an email from Ms. Jeanette, and asking them about the public work setting up the tent. And that's really not my, my area, it kinda comes out of your, your committee for the Heritage Park, or either Dave's committee on Heritage Park. Now, I did put through a resolution for Tuesday night. So they are in a time crunch to, I don't see Ms. Jeanette here, but they are in a time crunch of a busy event this Saturday. So.
That's true.
So part of it is from your committee and part of it is from Mr. Baker's committee. So I really needed a resolution from one of you out of your committee asking to do
We had one on the agenda last time, and it didn't carry over?
No, it carries over to the next regular meeting.
I see. I'll make the motion that we keep our promise to ask our public works people to help set up for the Heritage Day on Saturday.
Okay. Well, um.
Can you amend that motion to consider the resolution tonight rather than wait?
Well, I would say I'm disappointed nobody from Heritage Park is here tonight. And nobody was here Tuesday night. And, um, now all these guys are here for disco because they needed and wanted something. So I'm not real, I'm not real pleased, and I feel like, you know, to be quite honest, I'm, you know, everybody knows we had to take this to council for a vote before we use it, you know, before we use public works people. And I'm not happy about that. And like I said, Tuesday night, that would mean that Wednesday I would have to ask public works personnel to work over. It seems like this always ends up in my lap, and to take care and get all the loose ends tied up for everybody else. And, you know, I don't understand why I'm expected to act in one fashion, which is serve the public, and other people are not. So I would tell you, I'm not happy with that. Also, I'm not happy with the fact that an incident that come up today, this morning actually, and I would like to talk about that because we've talked about that in council meetings before. Our city facilities, we have an employee entrance sign, and we have a entrance sign for other people. And as we're working in the morning and leaving and going out and doing things, sometimes the gates open until somebody can get loaded up and get out, or maybe they're loading in a different area. And I've asked the council members to make appointments to see city personnel if they need something. And once again, this mo, well, or this morning, something happened, and the council member actually just drove into the gate, loaded up something from the warehouse when no one was in the warehouse yet. And, you know, that's, that's not acceptable. That is not acceptable.
Madam President, I was operating on your direct instruction, because it's on the minutes from the last meeting, if you hadn't brought me to draw here, but you totally do it, I did it.
Sir, you do not go to a municipal facility and drive your vehicle in and grab something out of the warehouse, and not let anybody know, and not make an appointment.
Let's be sure we know what we're talking about.
This is, I'm talking.
We're talking about the marker for the Heritage Park, which the mayor told me to install, so we had to pick it up to install it.
Okay. Do you not make an appointment with the person who's in charge of that facility and let them know that you're gonna be there, that you just don't go in and drive in and grab something and not let anybody know? You go in through an employee gate, but yet, as I've heard, city council members are not employees. So that is not acceptable. That is not acceptable. I don't think anyone would go to your house and grab something out of your backyard and not knock on your door and let you know, it's phone call first, and let you know that they're gonna be there. That, that is, that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable.
Well, it needs to be changed.
Why is that?
Do you have the authority to go on and off of a municipal property?
Yes, I do.
Well, that should have the same right, so we need to change that.
Mr. Webb? As the.
What do you think we did when we went up there? Went by there to steal something? Hello?
Well, I've got the video if any of the other council members.
I knew you rejected, I knew that you picked with me.
And yes, sir, we, we do watch.
What was done wrong?
You do not enter municipal property without an appointment. You enter through the front door, you do not enter through the side gate for employees.
Would you give me a number that I can reach you at?
Oh, for God's sakes. You do not go through.
I had public work, nobody at public work to answer the phone.
You guys. You do not, you do not go through an open gate, you do not go into a warehouse, you do not freely take things, you do not do that, and no other council member, I think, would do, from any other city would do that, because they would respect, they would respect the person who owns that facility, because that person is responsible for everything in that facility. That was not, I'm saying that is not acceptable. You don't do things like that, you don't do that. You don't do things like that, you don't do that, you don't do things like that to your neighbors, your relatives, or anyone else.
Today. And it is set, I put that sign on.
All I ask is that you be respectful to the people who are in charge and responsible of our city facilities, and you do not go into a facility and take something, do not openly walk into the employee entrance and go into a.
Are you saying we stole something?
I'm asking.
Sign a warrant on it.
Oh, come on.
I'm asking.
Oh, you come on.
No.
I'm tired of being accused of doing something wrong, when there's a bunch of, you know, what.
No, you know, you know you did wrong, so it just, that's a shame.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
You don't know that I did.
Yeah. I'm just asking that people be respectful. The council should be respectful. Jason is in charge of that property, and he's responsible for all.
I would make a motion that we bring this, take care of this business that we came here tonight to take care of. Let's approve the disc golf course. Would that be okay with you all?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm asking that you be respectful of our facilities manager. That's all I'm asking, and I'm doing it in a very nice manner, and I'm not accusing you of anything.
Hello?
No, sir, I'm not accusing you of anything, but, you know, I wish you would have gotten in touch with him first.
That's a good one.
Jason. Okay? All right?
When I went in there, there was nobody in the warehouse, nobody in the office.
There was someone in the office, and they were watching you.
So what? I'm not ashamed of it.
No, sorry.
We had a job we had to do, and we did it. Did you agree that the post need to be set before they signed the, sat on to it? You were supposed to help them out, but you didn't do it.
That is, that should have come out of your committee to recommend.
Doesn't matter, you were supposed to help out.
It was supposed to come out of your committee to recommend.
Renee, you don't know what you're talking about.
I'm so over this. Motion to adjourn.
Slight.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. opposed. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at 7:49.